Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of Wallingford Inland and Wetlands Water Course Commission to order. The date is Wednesday, May 3rd, 2017, and the time is 7:01. We'll start with pledge allegiance to the flag. Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. To the republic that before which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the right and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Darryl?
Darryl Bordeaux.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Debra Phillips.
Michael Caruso.
Bob Parisi.
Aaron O'Hair, environmental planner.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to designate the voting members tonight as being Nick Kern, myself, Debbie, Mike, and Darryl. Okay, going on to the minutes of the regular meeting of April 5th. Okay, is there a motion? Is there any corrections for the minutes?
I have a correction, Mr. Chairman. Page three, the motion that Debra Phillips made down at the bottom of the page, it's just the timing. It says, "A special meeting at 6:05 on Monday, April 17th at 4:30 PM." So, it's just a double time thing, so just noted.
What's that again now, Erin? We're in the middle of the, or the beginning of the page, yes?
Down at the bottom.
At the bottom.
They're talking about the special meeting, there's a motion to make a special meeting, and there's just two times given, 6:05 and 4:30. So, I want to make the correction, cross out the 6:05.
Oh, I see it.
We're keeping the 4:30.
6:05 is the address.
And it's, we did post it the right way, and we did the legal notice the right way, so there was no confusion.
Okay, any other comments regarding the minutes? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of April 5th, as submitted, with the corrections.
Second?
Second.
Okay, call for a vote. Darryl?
Aye.
Nick?
Yes.
Abstained. Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bobby, I don't think you were here, Bobby. Okay, going on to the minutes of the special meeting. Now, they just were handed out tonight, which is kind of unfortunate. I scanned through them, and I didn't see, everything seemed to be in order. Does the commission feel comfortable in voting on them tonight? Did they have a chance to look at them, or do you want to post table it till next month?
There's only two of you that were there.
Yeah, well, Bobby was there too, three of us were there. Up to you, Mike.
If you're comfortable, I'm comfortable. I mean, the 5:30 church, I'd like to read a little more, but if you're comfortable, I'll point.
What's her name was there, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
How are you? You haven't had a chance to look at them at all. I'm going to table them next month. Too bad they weren't here before this.
Mr. Chairman, can we note that the new member has arrived? Eileen McKeon?
We have a couple of new members. We have them up to my left, Eileen McKeon, is it? And we have Bob Parisi at the other end of the table. These are two new members to our commission, and we will enjoy their company, and we'll go on from there. Okay. All right, going into old business. Do you have this map for this? Oh, here's the map, okay, that's fine. All right, going on to old business, application A 17 2.1, 605 North Elm Street. Pat, Dean Attali.
Yes, sir. Good evening. For the record, my name is Norm Bolduc from LRC Group, 160 West Street, Cromwell, Connecticut, here representing Pat Dean Attali. And with us also is Tom Petros, the soil scientist who prepared the wetlands reports that you have as part of your package. We're here for a proposed five-lot subdivision on 10.34 acres, a parcel located at 605 North Elm Street. The property has 365.5 feet of frontage on the east side of North Elm Street, and 25 feet of frontage on the west side of Briarwood Lane, being part of the Beaumont Farm subdivision developed in 1978. The property currently has a one-story brick house, outbuildings, and driveways, and the site is served by town water, sewer, and gas. There's an existing .9 acre pond surrounded by inland wetlands, which have been flagged by Mr. Petrus, and there is a man-made drainage swale that exits off the west side of the pond. As the pond fills up with water, this runs overland through the swale and down the slope to North Elm Street drainage system. It appears that this was a problem for the town because the last reconstruction of North Elm Street, they installed a perforated underdrain system to catch the water before it reached North Elm Street. There's also a small pocket of wetlands in the northeast corner of the site. The property falls within an R-18 zone, which has a minimum lot size of 18,000 square feet, or .41 acres. The client is proposing five lots on 10 acres that range in size from .44 acres to 3 acres to 5.8 acres, and they all are to be served by water, sewer, and gas. It is proposed to provide an outlet control structure within the existing drainage channel outside of the flagged wetlands. From the outlet control structure, the water will be piped through a series of catch basins and piping through Lot 4, and ultimately connected to North Elm Street drainage system. This system has been redesigned since the original submission to address comments by your engineering staff. Based upon our development plan, we are not proposing to disturb any flagged wetlands, and we're proposing to conduct minor disturbance in the upland review area on both Lots 4 and 5. The disturbance is about 1,200 square feet on Lot 5 relating to grading at the rear of the proposed house, and 3,550 square feet associated with the installation of the storm drainage and the demolition of the existing house. We have provided erosion control adjacent to all regulated areas that includes double row of silt fence with hay bales in between. There's also erosion control of large cuts adjacent to the road. We've provided temporary sediment basins during construction activities to protect the area adjacent to North Elm Street and its drainage system. We've provided a slope trench drain at the base of the cuts for Lots 1 through 3 to collect any possible bleed out from the slope. We also provided a series of stone check dams within the proposed swale along the driveway to Lot 4. The plan also depicts the installation of erosion control blankets on all slopes greater than 3 to 1 slopes. We have designed the project to provide a zero increase in post-development peak flow rate, and have addressed this by a small basin on Lot 5, infiltrators for groundwater recharge on Lots 1 through 3, and also oversized piping along North Elm Street that are controlled by an outlet structure. We also tweaked our drainage numbers due to the recent clearing to be more conservative as requested by the town engineer to protect the downstream neighbors. We've had numerous meetings with your wetland staff to attempt to address the comments from her reports. We submitted a letter of responses to her comments today, along with revised plans addressing her additional comments this morning, and an addendum to the engineering summary report previously provided. We are in receipt of comments from your engineering staff and revised the plans accordingly, and we are in receipt of comments from your water and sewer department and have revised the plans accordingly. And Mr. Petrus is here, if you have any questions regarding the three reports, the wetlands delineation report, the wetlands report, and the wetlands report addendum, all that have been provided to you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond to you.
I'm sure we have some questions. I'm sure Aaron has got a pile of them. I have one major question. How did you determine the water elevation in the pond? That's 237 feet. How was that determined? What day, what time? Was it at its peak?
It was at the date of the survey, of the existing condition survey.
Okay, but that could be higher than that in peak time.
Yes.
So, how do you know? What is the elevation of the outlet structure?
The outlet structure is basically, it was six inches higher than what was proposed, what the water elevation was at the time. Because we were in a very dry season when we did this, when we did the survey, it was pretty much drought conditions. We raised the outlet structure six inches above the elevation of the current pond. And basically, it's going to act the same way as it does now, because now, as it fills up, it flows out of that drainage swale. So, basically, we maintain that same elevation of the drainage swale, so it will act the same as it currently does now.
So, you're telling me the drainage swale is at 237.5 feet?
Yes.
Right now? That's the bottom of the drainage swale?
Correct. So, we maintain that.
But is that on this print?
It should be on the site development plan. It has a chart on the lower right-hand corner of the...
I mean, to me, that is the, I think, the major part of this whole operation, is that pond, and maintaining the integrity and the flow and the volume of that pond. I'm sure if you went up there today, it's going to be a lot higher than 237.
Right. But the outlet channel is going to be maintained, so that keeps flowing until it's lower than the drainage channel. So, we maintain the elevation of the drainage channel with our outlet structure, so it would have...
Well, it's funny that you picked six inches in your first statement, but you didn't state the height of the drainage swale. Outlet structure, outlet structure. I don't, do you know what page that's on? Well, you go ahead. That's exactly what you should do. That should be...
Yeah, that was our goal.
If we're operating off to the base of that channel, that swale, or whatever we want to refer to it as.
As a...
But you took that as a measurement from there. That's not just a half inch, six inches more than the pond.
No, that's basically the grades we shot in our original boundary and topographic survey. And basically, we reviewed all these calculations with your town engineer, Rob Bolduc.
He wouldn't have that elevation.
No, but we basically told him what our premise was for the design, was to mimic the existing conditions of the pond, and he was in agreement with how we were achieving that.
Yeah, I'm not in disagreement, as long as that's what the elevation of the swale is.
Yes, it is.
Okay, Darryl, any questions?
No, no questions.
Eileen? Nick?
You did deep pole test out there?
No, we have not dug any deeps.
So, you don't know if there's any ledge out there?
There was some exposed ledge on Lot 5, or, we're not sure if it's ledge, there was some rock. Once the clearing was done, there was some visual, we noticed some rock.
So, to the extent that there's going to be blasting that needs to take place out there, I'm just worried about, my understanding is it's all red rock out there, or there's a lot of red rock, and if we go and crack it, we're going to drain the pond, and we're going to have nothing but a, you know, do we have any guarantee that there's not going to be that problem?
I don't think we're going to do any blasting, it's going to be more of a fill operation in the back, so.
What about the front houses?
The front, I don't know what's underneath there.
Are they going to have sellers, you're going to be digging, or?
No, probably going to be...
Slab on grade?
I don't know, I'm not going to do anything. Hopefully, they're for my grandchildren, you know, so there won't be anything done there for 20 years.
Okay, the only concern I heard was they're worried about alterations out there were going to cause surrounding dryups. That's the only thing, and Jim, like Jim said, we're concerned about the pond and the water. We want to keep the integrity where we are.
I understand, I'm concerned about it myself. As far as the rear lot, it'll be mostly a fill operation. And the front, as far as the demolition of the house, probably going to move maybe four feet of material there to fill it.
Microphone, sure you use the microphone.
All right. Again, the rear lot will be a fill operation, one off of Briarwood Lane, and we're going to maybe move or cut four, four to six feet, four or five feet?
Four feet.
Four feet of material to fill in, or to cover up the area where we're doing the demolition. And as far as the front lots go, I won't, there won't be any house construction there for many years, but...
The proposed houses there are basically drive-under construction, similar to what was built right next door in the other adjoining houses. So, it'd be drive-under, full wall.
Raised ranch-style loans. Yeah, I'm just being fail-safe here, because I just, you know, like I say, if there's cracking or fracking up there, all of a sudden, we're going to have...
Understand.
Debbie?
No comment.
Mike?
No comments.
Bobby? Okay, before I get over to Aaron, now, you're, from what I'm trying to put together, and of course, I was away for the last meeting and some of the other information here, but from the outlet structure that you're going to install, you're coming down and you've got a galley system associated with that drainage?
No, basically, it's going to be piped down to North Elm Street.
Directly, all the way down to North?
Not all the way down. There's a pipeline that runs parallel to North Elm, that's going to be an oversized pipe that's going to be controlled with a outlet control structure to provide some additional detention. Basically, Rob Baltromitis, your town engineer, asked us to be more conservative, because I guess the neighbor to the west had some issues with the outfall from the city storm drainage system.
So, this, this parallel pipe to North Elm Street, it's eventually going to tie into the storm drain?
Yes, correct.
And it's, did you say it was a perforated pipe that's going to act as?
No, that one's not a perforated.
And it's not a, it's not a galley system?
It's going to act similar to a galley system. It's going to have storage, it's not going to be perforated, but it's going to have an outlet structure that's intended to drain dry, so it's going to hold back the peak flow.
What do you call peak flow in this pond? What do you call peak flow in this pond? You have no inlet, and this is the only inlet. So, how did you measure peak flow?
Peak flow is just based upon what runs off the property now versus what's going to run off after development. That's what we develop, the post-development.
But to feed this pond, I mean, it's, it's, your, my opinion of your subdivision is going to add very little increase to already what's there.
Correct.
I mean, you have, depending on, you're talking about your fill, Lot 5 may not even get to the pond. There's that ridge, there's a very little window that allows that 5 to get to the pond.
Yes, the only part...
Of course, 4 goes to the pond, but it's all surface runoff. It's all, it's all, it isn't surface. If the ground's frozen and it rains, it may get to the pond.
That's what currently service that pond now, that's how that water's getting there, it's just overland flow, there's...
Well, you got to have some spring fed. That was always named Kershaw's Muck. Kershaw was the family that owned this property, it was Kershaw's Muck. But you also found a pipe in that swale area that must have been acting as some kind of accepting some of this runoff water?
What we think it was, was a crossing for whoever owned the property in the past. It looked like they laid down a section of pipe so they could drive over that, where that drainage ditch was, to access the other side of the property.
Did you find the outlet of it? You found the inlet, did you find the outlet?
No, we didn't find the outlet.
Because I think I could probably count the number of times that I've seen water actually run over ground down onto North Elm Street.
Okay.
I mean, very, very few times.
It may be the case, but when they did rebuild North Elm Street, the city, or, I'm sorry, the town, did install a perforated underdrain system off of the road, and based upon what they thought, it was because of that overland flow.
Interesting, but how would it get into it? If the water from the overflow came, there's no inlet to that, or...
They brought stone up to the surface.
They got stone to the surface along the...
It doesn't appear so now, that's what they said it was. It was a perforated pipe that had stone to the top to collect that water.
There's no question that when that pond overflowed, it was usually the conditions were, one, the ground was frozen, two, there might have been rain, so none of the rain entered into the ground recharge at all. So, when it came down to North Elm Street, there could be an icy strip in the gutter. So, I could see why they would take some kind of precaution from the time, but that was, that was pretty rare that that, I recall, that that taking place. Okay, Aaron?
Okay. It was submitted tonight, a revised plan. This is the, Norm, is this the third plan or the fourth plan? I'm not sure. Third plan? Okay. So, it came in at 20:05. I haven't looked at it yet. Also came in the engineering summary report, and the response, Norm Bolduc's responses to my environmental planners' report. The environmental planners' report went out in the packet last week. It's six pages long, there are a lot of concerns and comments, I don't know if you want to go over it. I combined, there was also the violation on the property.
Well, we can talk about the violation, but a lot of the things in the planners' report, I mean, you, it took you 11 days to get a answer out to them since the site investigation we had.
I'm sorry, 11 days to do that?
Well, we had the site investigation on the 17th.
Right.
And they received this on the 28th. This letter is prepared in response to your review comments, received by our office via fax dated April 28th.
Well, my environmental planners' report is always done the day of the packet. I don't know what you're saying.
Well, how could they answer the questions if?
Oh, because I did an environmental planner's report on March 31st, it was eight pages long. I did one on April 5th that was two pages long. So, there's been, this is a moving target, we've been back and forth with Norm a lot.
All right, so you've been going back and forth, have they, what haven't they satisfied in your environmental planners' report?
Offhand, I wouldn't know until I look at what they brought in. I met with Norm for two and a half hours this morning, we went over a lot of things. He said he was going to change a lot of things. Maybe he can address, was there anything I asked to be changed that was not changed, that for one reason or another, you did not feel you wanted to go that direction?
The only thing I think that we did not address was relocating the outlet structure again. We did move it outside of the wetland area from your first report. This morning, it was mentioned that you may want to move it further down the channel even more. Once we revised the drainage, we discussed it with Rob Baltromitis, and he seemed comfortable with what we had completed, so we left that as it was.
In this, in this plan where it is, I think the outlet structure is as close to the pond as possible is better. If you're going to pipe any of it, another five or seven feet of open swale, I don't think it has the benefit in this layout with the driveway there and everything. Now, some of the report I heard that the drainage piping is not, is going to be on Lot 1? Is that, is that true? Is it all going to be on Lot 4?
That from the outlet structure down to North Elm Street, it's going to run, probably 90% of it is on Lot 4. That was one of the conditions that Rob had requested, that we relocate it all to Lot 4. The only place it crosses Lot 3 is where it ties into, it crosses the front of Lots 3 and 2 to get to the existing storm drainage in North Elm Street.
Yeah, but that's Towne Wallingford property.
No, that's within the Lots 1 and 2, 2 and 3.
What are you using for a width of the road?
We created the designated street line as required by planning, so we had to widen, we're actually conveying a strip of land to the Towne Wallingford to make the right way wider.
But this is an 80-foot right of way. North Elm Street's an 80-foot right of way.
Correct.
And you're still outside of that right of way with the drainage system, the overflow system?
Yes.
You're not, you're not putting in a catch basin up on the, at the bottom of, on the corner of Lot 1? You're coming all the way down and trying to get into a catch basin?
We're coming in, there is a catch basin at the end of the driveway to Lot 4, then there's a manhole, and then there's a catch basin on Lot 2, and that catch basin ties into the existing basin on North Elm.
Are you running the whole distance to gain water storage?
No, basically, we have the system that comes down from the drainage channel, and then we also have a secondary system. Because of the cut in the lot behind Lots 1, 2, and 3, we have a slope trench drain at the base of that, and that also comes in, that comes in between Lots 1 and 2 and ties into the same basin system at North Elm.
All right, so this drainage system is going to be, you've got to get an easement for Lot 1, and not...
Lot...
Or Lot all of them?
This storm drainage system is going to have an easement for Lots 3, across Lots 3 and 2.
Lot 1?
Not for that main drainage system, no. For the slope trench drain, we'll have an easement between Lots 1 and 2, where it will come down and tie into the system.
Did Rob oversize that drain, French drain, he put in the side of the road to absorb your water runoff?
I believe it was only a 12-inch perforated pipe that they had put in off of the edge of the road.
Right. What's the reason for the catch basins on your side now?
Just to route that drainage from the channel all the way down to the drainage system. Because there's a couple different pipes that go into that existing basin on North Elm, the only access to it is from the back, so we have to come into our property before we start our drainage system.
Okay.
Norm, could you tell me where these, this large, we called it fat, detention pipe is near North Elm Street that's going to hold back the water to meet the peak flow? Where is that? I don't see it on the plan, where is it?
It's the pipe that runs parallel to North Elm Street. In front of Lots 2 and 3.
Oh, that whole thing? That whole?
It's a 24-inch pipe. We upsized that from a 15-inch pipe.
Well, today I was talking to Rob, and he indicated it was a perforated pipe. Is it perforated?
We weren't going to make it perforated, but we can easily make that perforated.
Oh, well, no, he told me it was a perforated pipe, and I said, "Why would you want it perforated?" I mean...
Unless he's trying to get some infiltration from that, but we were trying to avoid that because we didn't want to make the area any wetter than... But we were trying to avoid that because we didn't want to make the area wetter than it may already be.
That was, well, hi, his answer was to get groundwater to infiltrate into this pipe, to go into the pipe.
Well, we have that trench drain at the base of the slope, all the way behind Lots One, Two, and Three, which is gonna act as intercepting that groundwater.
No, I understand that. But he and I had a discussion at four-thirty today about the fact that this pipe, this large pipe, which is, how, it's twenty-four inches, is perforated. And I said, "But what in a lo, big storm, you don't want it perforated, 'cause then it's gonna leak out into the right-of-way." And he goes, "No, no, no. Water doesn't leak out unless the surrounding soil has the capacity to accommodate it." So he wanted it perforated. I'm, I'm just, it's...
Um, that wasn't expressed to us. We, we did make it a solid pipe, but if, if that is something that they want, he is gonna have another chance of the review at the planning stage. So if you would like that perforated, we'd be happy to make that perforated.
Erin, I have a question for you. You, how many times did you take the comb and rake over this application? 'Cause it sounds to me like you, you came up with a set of, uh, needs, and then you gave another letter, and then another letter? How many letters did you receive from Erin?
Well, we've had three, one meeting we had with both Erin and Rob, but then we received two different reports.
He didn't receive any letters. He just received the environmental planner reports that you guys received. Didn't get anything different from what you got.
What's your procedure with an, an application? Do you sit down and take a comb and go over and find all the discrepancies? And then notify them of the things that you want to see changed? I'm just...
Yes, yes.
All right.
Or I sit down with them. I do it differently. Sometimes it's done in person, and then I write it up. Sometimes they get a follow-up letter. Sometimes it's time for the environmental planners' report, so I don't give them a follow-up letter. I just give them the environment, if the timing is such in the month, I just give them the environmental planners' report, 'cause it has all the things I want in there. You know, it depends on the, where it falls in the month, you know?
Right, do they, do they get the environmental report in time to address those and pacify them and, uh, so that they're done? So when they come to the meeting, it's, everything is all set? You, you make it sound like you just came up with another batch of, uh, things that you want to see.
Um, we have, there has been a tremendous amount of work on this project. This, this site is very interesting, presents a lot of interesting constraints. Um, there's been several staff meetings. I've met with Rob like four times on, five, five times on this, uh, application?
On wetland issues or on drainage issues? I'm not sure where, where you're going with this.
I combine the wetland and the drainage in my mind because I don't want that pond, like Chairman Vitali said, we don't want that pond to be jeopardized at all. And then I don't want the receiving wetland, which is on, on the west side of North, of North Elm Street, the Bravo property and the property next door to Bravo. It's a large swamp. I don't want that swamp to be, um, disturbed by this adversely, if an adverse impact to this. So the, the number one issue for me looking at this was erosion control off the site because it's so wet. And I don't want it, when they open it up, there's a lot of seeps on this property today. I saw a few seeps that I hadn't seen before. So, so I was out there today. So when they open it up, there is the concern that things are gonna start to seep and flow more rapidly than they are even today. And especially down, not with Lots Four and Five. I'm, I'm comfortable with those. This is with Lots One, Two, Three by the road. How do you control that? I, I, a lot of concern about how do you control that site once you open it up for Lots One, Two, and Three? With the water, the groundwater, and it's right there on the road, you don't have room for a permanent storm basin. That's why we're doing this perforated pipe, another subdivision. You put in a storm basin. We can't, there's no room for a storm basin here.
Well, you just questioned him on the perforated pipe, why it wasn't solid, so...
Right, so that's why they put it in, 'cause they don't have any room for a storm basin. So Rob says, "Okay, what you're gonna do is you're gonna put in a, a pipe to detain it under the ground." At four-thirty today, Rob said it was perforated. I, I don't know where that disconnect is there, but, um, yeah, there's, there's concern nuts. There's some concern about additional flows, volumes coming off this property and going across the street and entering that swamp behind community pool. But more, more of my concern is sedimented flows. We don't want sedimented flows leaving the site, getting into the storm sewer, and entering that swamp. So I worked with Norm to do whatever we can. I gave a bunch of, uh, erosion controls measures today to put in, implement in the plan. I don't know if all of them are in there, but a bunch of things, like belt and suspenders. We do not want sediment leaving the site.
The revised plans you have, have addressed those additional erosion control measures. And we also included a, a sediment basin that was designed, uh, in accordance with the erosion control guidelines and, um, to, to accept any possible sediment that would come off during the cut of those three lots.
This was such a concern, it should've been addressed two meetings ago. If she's concerned about the S and E control, it should've been addressed then, and she should've told you that there's a problem with the normal S and E control. She wanted to beef it up, and these guys should've agreed to it, and it should've been done. Instead of waiting till four-thirty today, that maybe it's not gonna work, we need to do something different. This all should've been taken care of before today. She just expressed it was, one of her key things was the S and E controls, worried about the swamp across the street. Was it addressed before four-thirty today or...
Some of it has. There have been discussions, because I guess that, um, adjoining property owner came to her and, uh, had some concerns. So that was one of the reasons why that, um, oversized pipe was added. We didn't think it, our original design did not have that. It was just regular-sized pipe to accommodate the storm drainage. We increased that to provide a little additional storage to help with that. Basically, there's an erosion problem on the adjoining property. It's a town drainage system that outlets to their, uh, through their easement. So it, it's more a town issue for that particular drainage. But Rob asked us to be a little more conservative in the design to help with that, and we did achieve that through that, um, additional pipe.
So does Rob believe, or do you believe there's gonna be an increase in discharge point?
No, there was no increase in our original design, but once the property was cleared, um, he asked us to use more conservative numbers for the, the curve numbers and the drainage calculations, um, so we could provide a little additional, in, provide a little additional storage. Um, so we did all of that to, um, accommodate Rob's concerns.
All right, so then everything that's been requested for you to do, you've done, and then that's...
We feel that we have, yes.
Okay.
This, I just, I have several comments, but one, one thing I want to go over is, um, they're applying for several regulated activities. One is, comes under our surfaced area provision, because they're creating something like thirty-four thousand, something like that, square feet of, of surfaced area, something like that. Is that correct?
Between the driveways and the houses, it's something...
Yeah, driveways and, and rooftops. Um, so, on, I was talking to Rob, I would like, what I would like to see under that provision, I would like to see for Lot Four and Lot Five backing up. What we try, what we strive to do with that provision in our wetland regulations, we strive to replicate what's called a natural hydrograph. That means keeping the rainwater where it fell today. Now, of course, you can't always do that, but one way you can do that is you take the roof water and you infiltrate it into the ground. And the soils are good here, near the two big houses in the back. So we could do that, to infiltrate the soil into the ground. So I, uh, they are increasing the, uh, peak rate of flow off Lots, uh, Four or Five.
Has that been done?
No, because I asked Rob today in the calculations, I said, "Did they, how are they addressing, controlling the peak rate of flow off Lots Four and Five? Is it folded into the front?" And he goes, "No." He goes, "It's not that, that much." He says, "But if you want to put infiltrators in that, that's something that could be done because the soil is good there. The soil in the front is not good, but the soil on these two houses is good. So that would help keep the rainwater where it falls today." I would personally would like to see that.
Um, for the lot in the back Lot Five, um, we are outletting the, uh, roof water to the pond in the back of the house to achieve getting, um, water to that pond that was currently flowing there before the project. So basically, we're trying to balance out, uh, the flows that go to the pond. We could put it in ground, but we're just putting it on the surface, and it's, it's flowing to the pond. So it's, it's getting to the pond as opposed to, um, in infiltrators.
I, I'm confused, Norm. Today, that roof leader that I'm seeing for the first time right now did go to the pond. There's a ridge there. It would go the other way.
No, that ridge is being graded. We had discussed that this morning. The ridge was being graded.
Right, but a year ago, it went east, did it not?
Yes. But we're, we did add that roof water to the pond.
Well, you can't just add roof water to a steep slope like that. I don't see any protection. You just, first off, I, I don't know why you would put it on a steep slope like that that's gonna erode that slope. I'd rather see it go the other way, but...
Well, I, I, I got an awful feeling here that we're not going anywhere with this tonight. I can't get a, a handle. I, I, I think to have a lot on a four-acre, a house, one house on a four-acre lot is an ideal situation that we don't have very often, compared with three houses on half-acre lots. Okay? I mean, it's just a case of, of we're going around and round. You worked at four-thirty. Rob said this. You think you have satisfied that. I don't think you're gonna come to an answer tonight.
I, I didn't think you were gonna approve this tonight, but what you can...
But why not?
What I would like the commission to do tonight is decide significant activity. You can get that out of the way. Also to decide if that, that the pond overflow swale, is it an intermittent water course or not? The applicant says it's not. I don't know how you feel about that. If it is, it's, it, I'm not saying they shouldn't fill it. I'm saying it's a regulated activity if you fill a water course.
The only part of a swale you see there is the first fifteen feet. After that, the swale is kinda just flows over ground.
Correct.
And it doesn't flow too often. And there's no flow to this other than some high groundwater. It's not a case that it, there's an inlet or, or a true outlet. It's just a little bit of an overflow. So to call this, I don't know, to call this an intermittent water course, and you got a pipe there with that, we don't know where the outlet is, whether it was just a road crossing or it fed into the ground?
Norm, did you, uh, what do you, you have a peak, uh, shed, the roof drains are all shed flooded the pond, right?
Um, just for Lots Four and Five.
Right.
The Lots One through Three do have infiltrators.
When they get built, but there'll be wildlife there first. I'm sure there'll be some nice cows grazing or whatever. I don't, I don't, I don't believe there's any reason to put Four and Five underground.
We didn't either. That's why we...
I'm concerned about the pine, pond drying up, and Erin's concerned about hiding the water underground. It's not gonna work. I don't feel personally it's gonna work. So I would like to see it stay at the way it is. Go ahead, Erin, I'm just...
Um, today, the water flows to the east. They're asking to send that roof water to the west. I don't agree with that.
On Lot Four or Lot Five?
Uh, it's called Lot Five, the one on the east side.
You don't want it to flow to the west?
I'd like it to flow the way it does today. I, there's, I see no reason to send it down that steep slope. You were not at the sidewalk, Nick, but there's a steep slope. Why are we sending it?
Where do you think, where do you think the water goes on Lot Five now?
From the peak of the ridge, it goes to the east. From the peak of the ridge, it goes to the west. It depends on which side of the ridge you're standing on. It goes one way, it goes the other way.
So why, and is that changing?
That's what Norm is saying. They're putting a roof...
It, it's one gutter. I mean, it, it's not, we were putting it towards the pond. If you want us to reroute it to the, the east, it's not a problem, but, uh, we thought we would put it, it's clean water. We were putting it towards the pond.
But you, but you have a wetland right on the corner of the property.
Correct.
To the east. She is correct. From that particular ridge east, the water ran to the east.
Yes, it did. But we were putting that one, uh, roof leader into the pond.
Where are you gonna get it there?
It's gonna outfall to that slope. It, it basically...
You gotta get it, you gotta get it over the slope. Uh, fifty-four...
It, it's not much. There is some grading in the back that's taking place as part of the house construction. Um, so what, but we can reroute it to the east if you guys would choose.
We can make the leaders go wherever you want them to go.
That, that, I think it should stay in the flow that it's going. The pond has, has survived a, a million years the way it is. It's been disturbed, it's been dug out, it's been mucked, it's been topsoiled, it's been filled, it's been perimetered with a, with a walkway around it. Lot Five can flow to the east, and it's not gonna have any effect on the pond. Lot Four is gonna flow to the pond like it has. Correct?
Yes, that's fine.
And you made the comment, Erin, the only thing with this application is the three lots in front. You're only concerned about the erosion from the three lots in the front.
Because I thought, I thought they would agree to the infiltrators, 'cause Rob and I were talking about today. But if you don't want to put the infiltrators on Lots One, Five, that's fine. I would like to see it personally.
Well, no, they're not gonna go on there. We, we, we think it's better off feeding the whole ground from the surface, especially if you get in there. Hopefully, you won't put too much fill on that lot, so it retains its character of flow in that area. Okay, so, so we're getting back to the question of the three lots in front. This is the whole issue that you're having with this, the, the erosion control of the three lots in the front.
Well, I've worked with Norm. We've come a long way, I think. I've, I mean, we've, I, I don't know how many of the suggestions I made this morning are in here, but if they're in here, we've come a long way. And I guess what the commission has to do is decide significance, decide that's not an intermittent water course, um, and, uh, talk about the remediation, if you want to do any remediation for the violation activities, that's something to discuss. I was out there today, and I, I, that's, was my attention today. I put my attention on that today.
I, my personal opinion, the violation that you described is not as severe as it, it could have been. Yes, there is some trees along the ridge and, and one tree right behind the house on, on the pond, on the east and the west side of the pond. But he had a right to cut the, the rest of the cut. Now, I didn't see a planning plan, but I think there's gonna be some, uh, what, what are these properties going to end up to be? Are they fields? Are they pastures? Are they, um, trees?
Mostly tree, uh, I'm gonna have a few farm animals, possibly a horse.
You're gonna, you're gonna plant trees there?
Yeah. We're gonna do some fruit trees in, uh, this back pasture, and probably end up being a soccer field or baseball field for the kids.
I got the goalposts if you need them.
You got the goalposts? You've been that rough.
I mean, I've been there, done that.
Yeah. But mostly, I wanna get a, a few farm animals, not a full-blown farm, maybe a horse, a couple of sheep, uh, whatever it could be.
So, uh, okay. All right. One thing at a time. It, it, before we get into the violation, is there any comments in, in what we've just discussed?
No comments.
Nick?
No, Erin, you made a comment that I did, wasn't at the sidewalk. I probably spent more time out in that parcel than you have on this whole project, because I knew the former owner and, uh, we were friends. So I've done some things up there, like dredging the pond, some of the things that the chairman talked about. So I'm familiar with the lot. And I believe Lot One, Two, and Three are, they're gonna be in down-the-road development. And, um, it, the, the way they are designed now, Rob designed them with the perforated pipe to take the groundwater to help the town not pump their water from the lot into the street or down into the swamp. I think they've take, they've taken every measure possible. And then you've asked them to go beyond that. He said that if there needs to be more, uh, S and E control there, he's willing to do it. There's not a problem with that. If we don't have a soil and erosion control after all the trees came down, I don't believe we're gonna have it after the development starts. If we don't have a soil and erosion control after all the trees came down, I don't believe we're gonna have it after the development starts.
Good indication will be this week and...
Next week.
Hang on, let me, let me run.
Okay.
Any other questions where we've been so far?
No, no comment.
Okay.
I think one last thing that you might want Norm to explain is I asked him to put in a contingency in here in the erosion control plan for if they hit a spring. I've had that twice happen to me in Wallingford, where during development, they hit a spring and it was a mess. So I don't want that to happen here. So he, could you explain what you've planned for that possibility?
If, if the spring is hit, there was asked on the erosion control plan that there would be materials on site, crushed stone, some PVC pipe. And we proposed if there is a spring that was hit, that it would, a trench would be dug two feet wide, four feet deep, filled with stone and perforated pipe, and it would be outlitted to a vegetated area or connected to a storm drainage system.
Is the well still in the lot behind what would be the future?
No.
In lot two, there's a well.
Lot two, has that been discontinued?
Well, nobody uses it. The pipe is still there, though.
Okay.
There's a well. The old house was right in the front, I would say about lot two, the original Kershaw House. And there were, the well for the Kershaw House is still there in the front yard. Okay. That's an interesting concept. You're gonna drain the spring. I don't know quite how that, where it's gonna go, but I, I, I have an idea that hopefully that'll be a long shot. Be nice to be prepared for it, huh? All right, let me, let me flow a little bit with this. Okay. So, so far, we feel that four and five are pretty trouble-free lots. Let the flow, water flow in their natural course where they were going, one to the east, one to the west. Now, getting to this drainage outlet for the pond, this overflow from the pond. Now, one thing that's gonna take place, this pipe that's coming across two of the three lots and then going down, this pipe is, is gonna be surrounded by crushed stone?
Um, it's not perforated at this...
No, but is it gonna be surrounded by, set in crushed stone? I only say this because you're, you're putting this French drain down here, but this could be a preliminary to the French drain. This pipe can act as a drain in this system to give additional protection for downhill.
Yes, because we, we thought about the idea of putting stone all the way to the top, but it gets pretty deep in that area. It's, one place it's 12 feet deep. So it was a little excessive to bring stone all the way to the top, but it is gonna act as an interceptor of some...
Well, it doesn't, I didn't suggest 12 feet to the top. I was looking more just to surround the pipe. So we'll have some flow, or ability to have some flow along that. Okay, now, let's discuss whether this system, the present system is really an intermittent water course. And I think your expert has got the information on that.
Name for the record, Tom Petros, professional wetland soil scientist. In the reports that I prepared, I described this area as historic, developed as an old glacial pond. And then over thousands of years, it filled in with muck, mucky material. And it was a, it was a bog probably at one time. Then historically, it was dug out. Portions of it, the center and western portion became a pond. And the eastern portion of the, of the wetlands still retains a bog-type situation with, with woody vegetation. It's in a bowl. I do believe there's, there is ledge to the east and west. And that's, and the bottom of the pond is probably sealed either with silt and clays or with organics. And that's why it retains water for, for much, much of the year.
I will testify, there's a layer of clay underneath the water. If you do break through the layer of clay, I'm not sure where the bottom is, but there's a sizable layer of clay underneath that water.
Yeah, I believe it. The watershed for this pond is very small. And it's, and it's a sizable pond for this location, because you're on, on top of a hill. The, for some reason, I don't know who did, who did it, but the, the out, there was no true outlet to this wetland pond area. And, and over time, somebody did dig it, and that's where this channel is. It was, it was dug channel in places it's three feet, maybe three and a half feet deep. And it functions during the very wettest times of the year, as is, as is right now. You're getting some outflow from the pond. I was there in November in a drought. Obviously, there's no outflow. I was there again in early March, and there was no outflow, although the water did come up in the pond substantially from when I was there in November. And I was out there again last week to look at it again. There is some outflow. It's a, it's a channel that we're talking about. It's a man-made channel. It's an overflow channel from the brook, I mean, from that pond. And it's only truly functional during the very wettest times of the year, which we're in right now. So it's a several-week period. And then once we get beyond this crest that we're in right now with the high water, the water will level out in the pond and then throughout the summer and fall it will recede. So it's, it's a channel that, that flows very, for a short duration. And as you witnessed, it disperses across the hill. It doesn't go anywhere else.
So you would, was it fair to say that you would classify an intermittent water source that, that could run every time it rains? As compared with this only runs when the pond feels like overflowing?
Um, the, the channel that you have out there that is contained within the wetlands, that's, that's the area that retains wetness. The area, the portion of the channel that's flagged as wetlands, that, that retains very moist to wet conditions throughout a good portion of the year. During the wettest times of the year, you'll have short periods where you have flow beyond what was delineated as wetlands. And depending on when you're out there, sometimes you'll have flow and other times you won't. Today, you do have flow. If you go there two weeks, probably it's not gonna be there. So it's a, it's a flashy condition. And that's very understandable, because we're on top of a hill here with a small watershed. So we just went through a period of about maybe five, six inches of rain over about a five-week period. So conditions are very wet out there right now, but they're about to recede quickly.
Okay, but...
So it's...
Why is this not an intermittent water course?
It's hard to, it's, it's, I don't feel it's appropriate to call it an intermittent water course, because it's, it's very fluctuational. It's not like your true stream where you can go out for several months and find flowing water.
Okay. All right. Nick?
Is it safe to say that the contractor that made that original trough or that swale, that drained the pond so that he could muck it, if he had filled it back in, there'd be no discharge to the site?
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, that's, in places, that, that's three feet deep, that channel.
Right. The gentleman that purged that, to drain it so he could muck it, never filled it back in?
That's probably the best explanation.
Right. I can't tell you who it was, but I had a feeling.
Okay, any other questions? Daryl?
Uh, no questions.
Ellie?
No questions.
Deb?
No.
Mike?
No.
Bobby?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about exactly what we're talking about here. On the plan, Norm, you say you wanna clean the existing drainage channel to provide positive drainage to outlet structure. What does that mean? I mean, why don't we just leave it like it is? Are you gonna make it deeper?
No, we're not gonna make it deeper. We just want, once we construct the outlet structure, we just wanna make sure it's a clean path from there to the pond. If there's any old trees, anything that's in that ditch from where we construct that outlet structure to the pond, we just wanna clean it out. So because it was within the wetland area, we wanted to note that.
Well, today, I was there today. There's nothing in there.
Then there would be nothing to clean.
I mean, it's fine. At that point, if there is down, down the hill, there's a lot of logs in it, but right here, it's fine.
If that's the case, then we wouldn't be doing anything within it. We just wanted to have the ability, if there was material or something in there, we can clean it.
Right. And I see you, you wanted to remove that little bridge. It's really nice. And it, it allows people to cross to the, the top side of the property. Why would you wanna remove it?
Because it's very unsafe and I don't want my grandchildren walking over that. I don't want my grandchildren walking over that.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, this is a focus on, Aaron wants us to make a determination if this is an intermittent water course. If there's, if feel comfortable, we'll call for a vote on this particular...
All right, I wanna make a motion to the swale discharge point at 60... At 605 North Elm Street be deemed a not, an intermediate water course.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any other discussion? Okay, Daryl?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. So that takes care of the drainage course, swale. Now, if the whole function of your concern, Aaron, is this soil and erosion from one, two, and three, lots one, two, and three, but you've addressed that with perforated pipe. Explain how you address that concern of that erosion control.
In a couple of stages, we put quite a bit of erosion control. We also designed a sediment basin with a sediment trap. So any erosion that would occur while that material is being dug out for lots one through three, there's diversion swales. So any water that would run past the sediment basin would be caught by these diversion swales and brought into the sediment trap.
Now, your French drain, is that gonna be put in now or at the time of construction of the houses?
At the time, I'm not sure of the timing on that, but the, it will be done after the slope is excavated. That when that lots one through three is cut out, then the trench drain will be installed at the base of that slope.
So the, the, the piping from the outlet of the pond is going to be done now?
Correct.
And pretty much the, the rest of one, two, and three is gonna be on hold?
Um, that's up to the developer when he decides to construct that.
I'd like to leave the front alone as long as possible.
Yep. That's right. I'm just trying to get a handle on what the flow is going on here. So we're not gonna have 10 acres, 10 and a half acres open at once. We're gonna have kind of eight and kind of three or four in the front or whatever, and then two or three in the front, kind of on hold.
Correct.
Now, is it your intention to use the entrance from North Elm Street for lot four?
Yes.
As a primary entrance?
It's gonna be, because it's too steep to meet the town's regulations for driveway, we are gonna have to excavate up, up the top of the hill to bring it down to the correct slope to meet the requirements for driveway slope.
What's the cut?
Um, I believe it was around six feet.
Six feet?
Okay, but that, that is a 12% grade, I gather. But it, it is going to be the primary driveway?
For lot four.
For it.
Correct.
But now, do you have, I thought I saw kind of a trail over to it from Briarwood.
That's, that's...
That's just for five?
Five, correct.
They don't, they don't really connect?
No, they're, um, the water division asked us to bring the water service for lot four in from Briarwood because of pressure.
Yeah, I, I'll attest to that, too. I've got the last house on the line and...
So they asked us to, so there is a water easement that comes from Briarwood Lane through lot five to connect to lot four?
I got you. That's okay. That, that's fine. Now I understand. All right. So is, there's the... Aaron, getting back onto the soil and erosion control of those three lots. Okay? They said they've got the design. They've got S and E in there that you wanted. And is that, is that where we are with this?
Yes, I met with Norm this morning. I added a bunch more. I assume they're on the plan. I haven't had time to check, but I assume all the, a lot of them, I just looked at some of them. They're on there. So I assume they're on there. And that would, and I was talking to Rob today, and he indicated, I don't know if Norm is aware of this, that that large detention pipe along North Elm Street goes in now, goes in at the beginning of the project.
Correct. That's part of the drainage outlet from the pond.
Right. And then down the road, 10 years, whatever, the drainage from lots one, two, and three will be added to that pipe. So it won't be at its capacity. It'll be sitting there doing its job, but it won't be at full capacity till you connect lots one, two, and three to it as well.
So it would act as additional storage until lots one, two, and three is constructed?
You talked about you're gonna haunch one, two, and three and prep them. How are you gonna control that slope? What's, you're gonna cut that to get them set up?
I don't think I'm gonna have to cut them at this point.
It's got a little bit of an upgrade to it. When you drive by, you can see it. But are you thinking it's flat enough, the three houses will sit there without doing any, because you're showing the contours?
Yeah, I'm showing the contours, but I, I was trying to avoid ripping up, opening up that whole hill.
Right. So the only disturbance will be just to put your drainage down through there?
Pretty much. And then I'm gonna try and get the fill that I'm gonna need from the driveway cut for lot five. And only if I needed more fill would I, would I, and I wouldn't open, well, I'm gonna have to open up for the water and sewer laterals.
Yeah.
That Rob, Rob requested.
He requested to bring all the services, because we're putting that oversized pipe across the frontage, he would like to bring all the services for lots one, two, and three into the lot. So if the lots were to be sold, it's not a, somebody's not gonna go dig up that detention pipe, right?
What are you talking for yardage on the cut? Rough guess, you know, I'm not gonna hold you to it.
I, I couldn't guess.
Five hundred, thousand?
I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Well, you must have a water and sewer cut, or serviced the lot, too, because that's about where it came up for the house, existing house.
I don't know where it is.
It pretty much came straight up the face there.
Mr. Chairman?
So, so...
I wanna go back, just, I was thinking about what Commissioner Kern said. The reason the delay came, it just came to me, you were questioning why we're just getting the plans today. Norm wanted to wait till he had the comments from engineering. That's why he didn't revise the plans. So once he got the comments from engineering, then he was ready to roll to revise the plans. That, that was the holdup. Because Rob did have some very significant comments and changes to make, and he didn't wanna do, revise it twice, twice more. So that, that was the holdup.
The, the one comment that has come out, the major issue with the S and E on the lot one, two, or three is not, I felt that it was not a comment that was regarding the normal activity of building these three properties. It comes under the problem if a catastrophe happens while they're building it. And that's, it's one thing to protect against, it's one thing to plan while you're, during construction. It's another thing to get involved in a project that, and maybe what-if kind of thing. So it's not a bad thing, but it's not the reason for this application. Well, does anybody have any other conditions on this application? Does, does anybody feel that they can't act upon this tonight? Okay, then Aaron says we have to determine significant activity. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, application A 17 2.1 605 North Elm Street, Pasquale Di Natale Residential Subdivision, five lot, be deemed a non-significant activity.
Okay, with, with...
My reasons.
Not a significant activity. That's fine. I'm out. I missed. Okay, motion made that it be termed not a significant activity.
Right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Daryl?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application. You want the conditions? Mr. Chairman, report with conditions. Hang on just a minute. They got moved all around here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application A 17 2.1 605 North Elm Street, Pasquale Di Natale Residential Subdivision, five lot, as submitted with the following add-ons. One, should the application choose to place a conservation easement on the Inland Wetlands Jurisdictionary located on lot four and five to protect and conserve the pond swamp system, the draft conservation easement document is to be submitted to the environmental plan for review prior to being filed with the land records regarding 605 North Elm Street. Number two, Inland Wetland plaque cards shall be...
Hang on a minute. We're getting some, it just wasn't discussed with Aaron?
Yes, Aaron had requested a conservation easement. The client does not choose to provide one. The reason being is that I, I am going to be living there, and I'm, I think that I'd be a good steward of the wetlands. If I were developing the property and selling it and there would be other people living there, I would have no problem granting the easement. But seeing as how I will be living there, I don't feel that it's necessary.
Okay, so you, you, application number one of her recommendations, you're not agreeing to?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I'll cross that one off.
Okay, so disregard that. Okay, so you, application number one of her recommendations you're not agreeing to?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll cross that one off.
Okay, so disregard that. Item number two, inland wetland plaque cards should be placed at 50-foot intervals along the upland review area boundary lines or along the approved encroachment into the upland review area as applied on lot four and five prior to the grading commencing on the respective lots.
That can be hung right on the fence posts of your pasture.
Fence posts of the pasture. They're just little cards that notify people that it's, you're in a wetland area. She's got it here prior to grading commencing on the respective lots. I'd rather see it done after the completion of the work, Aaron, so they don't disappear.
Where do they go? They could nail on a post.
They're a little card.
Fifty feet outside of the wetland.
Okay.
Just don't walk your paces to do it. Use tape this night.
All right, and item three, erosion control measures are in place, meeting the approval of the environmental prior to any further work being conducted on site. Environmental planner shall be given one week notice relatively to the scheduling of the installation inspection.
That's a standard condition. Okay, does the commissioners understand the motion? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any other discussion to the motion? Call for a vote.
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Should end at page six.
Okay. All right, moving on on the agenda is seven, application A 17 2.3 1460 Tuttle Avenue. Status, Aaron? Oh, here he is.
Hi, David White, 1460 Tuttle Avenue.
Yes. Where are we with this, Aaron?
At the last meeting, the, this is a multi-pronged application. There's like five or six different things they're asking for, or property improvements in this one application. The driving force was the driveway improvement plan because there was a fire safety concern. So that portion, we broke out, and the commission approved that last time because of the driveway, because of the safety concern. I don't know if that, I presume it hasn't started because I'm supposed to get a phone call to inspect before it starts, so it hasn't started. I don't know, maybe we can have the owner talk about when it's planned to start, and I just.
Excuse me just a minute, to start what, the driveway?
To start.
The driveway's already been done?
No. We approved it.
Yeah, okay.
Right, it hasn't been installed.
All right, so he's working, he's talking about the driveway project, the driveway part of the permit.
I'd be curious to know what the plans are for that, if it's imminent, or if we're going to put it off for a few years, or what's going on?
Not a few years, but we're going to have to, you know, accumulate the funds again and, you know, interview different contractors, because the person we were going to use, we're, you know, not in favor of using, so.
So you're not doing anything with the driveway right now?
Not immediately, but hopefully.
Aren't you worried if your house burns, the fire truck can't get in?
Of course, right, but I, money, yeah.
So Mr.? Go ahead. No, so we're just on hold then?
Well, actually, for the paddock area, I need more, part of this is this paddock they want to build. I would like more information on the paddock. Right now, it's larger than the original paddock, it goes into some wetland areas. I just want a little more detail on that, but as far as they putting up the electric fence in back of their house, I feel comfortable with them doing that. They want to put up a fence on their other horse area, I feel comfortable with that being approved tonight. Even the stone terrace steps.
So what are we really talking about here tonight?
I was under, I was under the impression that this driveway was going to get built, like as soon as the snow melted, you know?
So we're not building the driveway, which is a safety feature, but we're building the paddock, we're creasing the paddock for the horse?
Well, no, I'm saying I'm not in favor of moving ahead with the paddock because I don't have enough information, they didn't, they didn't give any.
You said it was bigger than what was there. In other words, something's already there.
I have an outline on a piece of paper, it has no dimensions, has no thickness, I don't, I need to give it to the sewer division to make sure they're okay with how they're doing the gates, so that I'm not okay with. But these other things are like window dressing, sort of, I'm, they're not of great concern. If the commission wanted, go ahead and approve the electric fence and things like that.
Do we have, we don't have a list of things we're approving or asking?
Well, it was, it was handed out, oh, probably two or three months ago.
Okay.
I have it here, I could bring it up if you'd like.
Hang on a minute, Nick?
I'm not comfortable doing anything till I get a commitment from him, when the driveway's going to be done. I understand funds have run out, but you've got to give us a date, we've been dragging this out for the last couple of years, so you've got to work a little to get a little. So you need verbally to give me a commitment to when you plan on having that driveway. I don't want to hear about the contracts, because you're already in touch with the contracts that messed the place up for you, so you can get back with them and see if they can give you a price to fix what they messed up. So you should be able, generally, generally, if you'd like, to give us a date that you're going to have this driveway done, and then.
I was, sorry, I wasn't aware of a date, you know, being needed, and I'll try to, try to come up with that, but I can't, you know, right this minute.
What are we talking for money to build the paddock? Thousands of dollars?
Actually, no, we're not planning on doing the paddock immediately, just, you know, when all this came up, we were just putting it in the application to get approval to do it when we can. I'm not aware of any timeframes.
Well, with summer's coming and you'd like to get your horses out there and get them any fresh air in the open or whatever, I just.
I'd rather get the driveway done first.
I would like to see the driveway done first, myself.
Absolutely.
All right, I mean, because we've dragged this out, we're, we've been there a couple times, and I just, for safety of your children and your wife, the driveway should be done. And then we'll talk about the paddock, and that's probably the simplest part of this whole application, would be the paddock and what you want to do with the electric fence. So instead of, every month you come here and give us little bits and pieces, I'd rather you concentrate on a date for the driveway. Is that fair, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, it is. The only other thing is I'm, I'm not totally against if there's two pieces of electric fence to put up either, only because that's not, shouldn't have any impact to the wetlands.
What's your recommendation, Aaron?
Okay, I'm taking it out. Replace electric tape fencing with wood post fencing. Oh, I see. Replace electric tape fencing with wood post fencing along north and west edges of existing horse pen.
That averages about $30 or $40 a foot. So if you take a paddock that's maybe 100 feet, that's what, 10 grand? And a lot of work in that driveway for 10 grand.
No, this is just fencing between the barn and the house.
Where the garden used to be?
Straight across, no, behind the house, between the barn and the house.
Oh, that was down in the wetlands when we did the.
Right, where the horse pen is now, just removing some of that electric fence and just making it, just a wood post fence just between the barn and the house, just to make it a little more stable, you know, between the animals.
The tape's not holding them, or the fence is just for?
No, it usually does, but if it was just rigid, you know, along there, it'd just feel a little better, you know, with, with them being just so close to the house right there. And then there's a gate across the driveway before you turn that's within the review area, so we'd like to keep that there.
Yeah, that's how we come in, that's where we come in, it's been up for about a year or so, and they want to make it after the fact official, that's one of the things they'd like approved. They also want to extend an electric tape fencing around the southeastern corner of the barn. Well, that's fine, I mean, that's not an impact. So maybe those three things, and then, and then come back at a later date with the paddock and the terrace, that's my idea.
Now, the southeast part, was that the part that we told you to pull back because you're already down in there with the fencing and the horses were?
The southeast part would be the southeast corner of the barn.
Right, directly behind the house and to the right, if you're in your back.
Behind the barn.
Yeah.
Actually, on the other side, right. There's, there's part of the old wood fence that's, you know, fallen down and has trees fallen on it, so this would just be, just on the upland side of that, those remnants of fence that's there.
Do you want me to bring it up?
Sir?
Commissioner Kern, the drawing?
I don't remember seeing that in my packet, Aaron, that's why, you said we got it a couple of months ago?
You would have gotten it in March, the one that went out at the end of February or early March.
It would be the brown line, number four.
Well, I mean, can we, if we, what, you go ahead with this, can we get a commitment date from you on the driveway? Talk to your financial director, they handles your funding? Because I have one of those at home, too.
Yes, right.
So, because I definitely would like a date on the driveway.
Right, and we've been pressing, but, and I mean, everybody's got issues, and we had unexpected expense just two weeks ago. That was quite unfortunate, so.
All right, well, if any, nobody else, I'm just one voice here, so I need the rest of the commission.
Darrell, comments?
Yeah, I mean, it does seem to me that the driveway should be the essential, you know, part of this application there, I mean, for the safety reason of it, so I think that getting a date for that would be a smart thing.
I'm sorry, Darrell, I, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. I lead, you have a.
I don't have any comments.
Not on this one, this one's, you got to live this one for the last two, three years. Debbie?
No, I'm fine with that.
Mike?
Not a problem.
Debbie?
Fine.
Want to let him put his fences in, Nick?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to allow him to put the fences in. What was the third one, Aaron?
Electric fence, wood fence, and.
The gate?
Oh, retroactively approve the gate at the front of where you come into their property.
Okay.
Okay.
You want to handle?
Yeah, I'll handle. All right, I'd like to make a motion, application A 17 2.3 1460 Tuttle Ave, David and Christine White, several yard improvements in paddock. We give Mr. White permission to put the electric fence in, the gate, and the fencing, the wood fencing from the house to the existing barn, in trade for a commitment date from Mr. White within the next 15 days to an approximate time to have the driveway meet our specifications for the Youngland Wetlands Water Course Commission.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion? My discussion is that, now, Aaron, this permit, following this permit number is only a half of a permit.
Right.
So somehow you either got to have an A and B associated with this.
Okay, we'll make it A and B.
Okay. All right, call for a vote, Darrell?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all right. Good luck, yeah. Okay, I'm going to come down into the violation category. I don't, I don't see a, a application on the old business category, so I'd like at this time to discuss item three under violations, eight and 10 at Water Place.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for your record, my name is Dennis Sanaviva, I represent Howard and Gail Loman. To my left is George Cotter, our project engineer. We're here, of course, under the cease and desist order from back in November. We've been here several times. Last month, the commissioners may recall, we've presented a plan, we were able to determine how much fill was placed in this site between 2003, 2004, right after there was an approval granted to do work at the neighboring lot, 10 at Water Place, or rather, 9 at Water Place. George was here to explain that plan, we've submitted plans to Aaron, new plans were submitted again today. I was just going to have George go through the plans as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I think Aaron's got plans.
She gave me two. I knew George knew how to count.
Sure about that. I met with Aaron on the 17th, went through the plans that we had presented at the last meeting. We updated Ross Page's original existing conditions after a site lock with Aaron back in January. Because of the snow, we didn't get out there to do the total work that she had requested. So on the 17th, we went over the plans, we have an existing condition plan, a restoration plan, an erosion and sedimentation control plan. What we're basically proposing on the project is to slope the areas of the fill limit, bring it back on a three to one and a four to one, expose the existing storm pipe that drains at Water Place near the rear of the property, and that would be a two to one slope. We will loam and seed the areas within the 50-foot setback and the 100-foot greenbelt, and not on the plan, but I would propose that we put up placards at 100-foot intervals just to delineate where the limits of the restored areas is and where the remaining areas on the property that have been filled. There is no present plan of development, but we're here on a cease and desist, and what we need to do, what we needed to do was give you a restoration plan. I discussed it again with Aaron, the area around where the pipe will be exposed is a two to one slope, just because of the elevation difference, so we'll excavate back, expose the pipe, put riprap at the bottom, and she asked about how are we going to stabilize slopes? We put erosion blankets in that area, the rest of the slopes are three to one and four to one. We have 230 yards of excavation, and we're planning to grade in 190 yards in a low area where the water kind of runs to one portion at the center of the lot and fill that in, so it's going to basically drain off on a, all over along the way. The floodwaters are controlled by the Oak Street Bridge. As the water goes through, it drops over three feet from one side of the bridge, so that is the controlling backwater effect for the property. We added floodplain limit lines, we added the floodway line, and we added the wetlands that had been shown prior. So I believe the plan is an answer to your cease and desist and gets the property stabilized properly and does not impact your upland review area because we're going to loam and seed it. If there's any additional fill when we bring the topsoil in, there's an area designated on the plan that we would remove a portion of the fill to give us a compensatory fill and excavation off the site. That's kind of the general concept of it, we went through this last month. We went through this last month. I walked it this afternoon with Erin and went over it. There's a portion on the south edge of the property where the neighbor appears to have pushed fill in onto the property of 8 and 10 at Water. We've shown that to be removed, back to our property line and out of the floodway area. If you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer.
I'm gonna go over to Erin with this, because she's been dealing with this. What's the story?
Okay, I did go out with George this afternoon. I had the plan a few, I guess a week ago, whatever, but it's, I find the plan confusing. So when you're out there, it's easier to understand these shits that are now in front of you. Basically, to summarize, correct me if I'm wrong, George, they're not going to, they're not going to decrease their encroachment toward the wetlands at all. But what they're gonna do is flatten out the fill. So the fill today is, you know, like this, they're gonna, if the fill today goes like this, they're gonna flatten it out. So they will be removing material from these slopes and putting it elsewhere, whatever, but they are not going to decrease the distance from the wetlands that they are today. And I said, well, why aren't you going to decrease, are you, you know, are you basically asking for that, like, an application, like, I wanna put fill within 30 feet of a wetland, so sort of retroactively asking for that permit? And he goes, he said, well, no, this, we didn't fill anything new. In other words, the encroachment is not a new activity. What was new is grading, so that's, as it drops off in the upland review area toward the wetlands, is steeper now. And the reason it's steeper now is because they graded the top plateau area to make it flat, nice and flat, and in doing so, they created a much sharper drop-off toward the lowland in the back, toward the floodplain in the back. Did I get that right, George?
Yeah.
Okay. And in doing this, they'll flatten out the slope and they'll seed it, put topsoil on it and seed it. So I guess what the commission has, and there's more, but what the commission has to do is agree that there was no, agree to, and maybe you want a site investigation to look at this, but to agree that it's okay to do that, because when someone comes in for an application, they might ask, can we put fill to within about 30 feet of the wetland? I think that's the closest point, is around 30 feet, is that right, George?
Yes.
Something like that? Okay. And some of it's maybe 55 feet from the wetlands, not all of it is right in the wetlands. So someone might come in and ask for that fill and that improvement of the property. So it's not an unusual request. In this case, it was done without a permit, and does the commission want to permit this improvement of this industrial property? What would make it easier if they knew what they wanted to do, but they still don't know, the owners still don't know what the ultimate use of this property is? If they did, they could come in with an application and it could be reviewed as an application, as an industrial application. So that's basically the long and the short of it.
Mr. Chairman, if, when this property is developed, and there are two parcels, it could be two separate individual developments, or it could be combined development for the whole area, they're gonna have to come back before the wetlands with a full-blown application and go through the total process. What you've got them on is a cease and desist, and we're providing a plan for you to get the property under control, out of your review area with, you know, any hard surfaces, and out of the greenbelt for planting. And we're gonna loam and seed those areas and slope them back 3 to 1 and 4 to 1, so that there should be, there will be no issues, impact onto the wetlands. There's no runoff or sediment that has gone into that review area. It's stable, but you've got them here before you. We provided a plan that says we'll make this so that there's no more need for a cease and desist.
I think it's important to note, Mr. Chairman, we're talking about, the activity took place between, about 95% of the activity between 2003 and 2004, and that's when the fill was placed inappropriately, as we've turned out, that's why we're here. But 9 at Water, Lot 10 in this subdivision, was developed, it was a proper wetlands permit, P and Z approval, and then Logan Steel used these two lots for outside storage, and that's why, again, unfortunately, the fill was there. But to make, to bring it back to where it was prior to 2003, I think according to George's plan, doesn't make much sense. What's better served for the wetlands is to make certain that he's created the proper slopes to stabilize the area, we'll have the placards so that this doesn't happen again. And again, when the lowmans do have a plan, they'll come forward certainly at that point.
The interesting thing I find in your speeches is that you indicate that when they come back again for the development of this property, we got another shot at them. Except, they got a permit now to leave the material where it is. Just because you eliminate the cease and desist, that's granting them a permit that everything is fine. That shot coming back at them, you're gonna put a note in the book, oh, by the way, if you come in five years from now, be prepared to back the material out?
No, you're not gonna back this material out from this. The property was filled back when he says. Back then, the regulation was different than it is now for filling within a floodplain. The elevation that we have is at, these are two building lots approved by Inland Wetlands and Planning and Zoning back '88. The elevations that we're at now creates a site that you can build on as a building lot. The impacts to the wetlands from after we restore it back, there will not be any additional impacts. The flooding of the Quinnipiac is controlled by the Oak Street Bridge as a restriction and backs the water almost level up through us, from 67 at the bridge to 67 where we are. That's the elevation that we're at, basic grade on site. If we haven't added any more fill, the control points that you're gonna need to review during the future applications is how do we manage stormwater off the site? And the activities that, we've limited the activities to your 50-foot review area. So you'll have a full-blown site plan at that point, drainage, et cetera, erosion and sediment controls for the, you know, the application. I think what the, to me, in looking at it, what we wanna do is, is to get this property within the areas that you regulate to a condition that allows, that there will be no impacts onto the wetland.
Okay. Any comments, Daryl?
No comments.
Ely?
No comments.
Nick?
If they came in 2007 and put the application that was in front of us and finished it, and then nobody had ever been a problem with it, this whole thing's generated from bringing fill in and filling it up, raising the elevation up. So it's, who got the mud on their nose? It would be them, because they never came and asked to finish up what they wanted to do in 2007. Because I remember sitting here one night and they withdrew their application because they weren't gonna finish it, so.
They were before you, in 2002, too.
Right. Two or seven?
Two.
Were you on that?
I was...
When did we do the site walk out there, George?
Well, I, my involvement was in 2002 because I sat up there as the consultant.
Right, okay.
And I had, I still have the parcel, parts of the file in my office, so I had a letter back to that date from Giuliano Associates.
What made you so inclined to take 3 inches of fill off a lot of, you know how hard it is to take 3 inches of fill off the top of a lot?
We've got to bring, we've got to bring in topsoil to, to provide growth for the, for grass within the review area and within the greenbelt. That quantity, we've got an area on the thing that we're just gonna remove the same equivalent number of cubic yards of material, or truckloads of material, so we meet the current regulations of filling within a floodplain.
I thought you were gonna use this for parking and storage. You had, he has a client that wants to use this for storage.
It's, it being used is outside storage, but the thing is, is that none of the activity is gonna be within your, your 50-foot review area.
Lot 8 isn't in the review area, is it?
There's portions of both, both lots that come within, that are, the material that's there now is within 50, portions within 50 feet of the wetland. It's the green area, if I can show you on the plan?
No, that's right. I just wondered why you were going 3 inches on a lot that's supposed to be an approved lot, why you were taking 3 inches off?
If, I can't bring in any additional fill to the site without removing something within the floodplain. And seeing as the both lots are within the floodplain, I'm not gonna add any additional fill. From what I'm proposing to slope back, I'm gonna get rid of an extra 30 or 40 yards of material that I'm gonna move in where it kind of dips in the middle and the water kind of funnels to one point, just bring that up 0 to a foot and a half.
So the last time it rained, I drove out there, the footprint that's out there now is a footprint that's gonna stay there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Except, we're gonna remove areas, very southern tip, that we are within the floodplain, floodway. It's not our fill, but we're gonna have it removed, and the rest of it is to provide a proper slope from the 50-foot buffer line down to ground grade in that area of the upland review area.
Okay, so then, but by us releasing the cease and desist, it'll put him back online to be able to generate what he needs to generate on that, that area?
Yes.
Okay. I just, the way it looked was you were talking about putting it all on topsoil or grassing in, and he's gonna lose his client because you've got it all grassed in.
No. If you look at the plan, the only area that's getting grassed is the green area on the board. So it's, some areas are only 10 feet from it, other areas it's 25. So it's not gonna restrict the use of the land, the area that he has now.
Okay.
Debbie?
No comments.
Mike?
No comments.
Bobby? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I just want, wanted to, I just dug around and, yeah, Commissioner Kern, it was, actually 2009, they did come in for wetland application in 2009 for storage units, Giuliano Associates. So it was 2009. I went out there and, and what happened is they, we, the commission tabled it and it just fizzled out, so it was dropped.
You were involved with that, right?
Yeah.
2009? You weren't here yet.
Me?
Yes.
I got here in 2005.
So you were...
I was here, yeah.
When Mr. Giuliano came with that application, you were on that site walk and went up there and saw the boat stuck in the bank, the fiberglass boat?
I saw the boat recently. I don't remember it from back then. Maybe I did, I don't remember.
I, I thought, the night we, this originally came with the violation, I told you, you said you weren't on board when this happened. 2002 you weren't, but for 2009, you were at that site walk?
Yeah, I was.
Okay.
2009, and they came in for storage units.
Yes.
And then they went away. I don't know why, but they, they didn't pursue it.
All right, thank you, Erin.
The, if there's no other comments or questions, we're authorizing them. Now, is this a permit? You don't have, you're not requesting a permit, but you're requesting a remediation. So we'll grant you the remediation and eliminate the cease and desist after the remediation is done.
That'd be fine. That's correct.
All right, so I guess I'm entertaining a motion to grant them their remediation plan. Okay, is that right, Erin?
Correct.
Correct. Go ahead, Erin.
So by giving them permission to do the remediation plan, it, it allows the cease and desist, or does the cease and desist say?
No, you, you should approve the remediation plan, and you wanna make sure they do it. So I would say it remains, the cease and desist remains, with the exception of installing the remediation plan, because you wanna make sure they do that. And then once it's successfully installed and stabilized, you lift the cease and desist.
Time, timeframe?
I think their interest is to begin very quickly.
Quickly? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, violation, cease and desist, 8 and 10 at Water Place, Howard Senior and Gail Lowman, filling, B.
Remediation, remediation plan?
Yeah.
Remediation plan should be approved.
Remediation plan to be approved, as submitted.
And the cease and desist staying in place until the plan is successful?
Successful.
Yes.
All right?
Yes. Okay? All right. We've created a motion that, that agrees with their remediation plan. We're allowing their remediation plan to go forward, and, but also the cease and desist stays in effect until the plan is in place and approved or growing and everything's fine. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Daryl?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you're all, you're all set. Are you staying there, Dennis?
I'm just gonna go over the next, under old business?
Yes. Okay. Application, A 17 3.1, 6 and 8 Northrop Industrial Park Road West. Now, you came in with a permit for that, or a request for a permit for that, but at the same time, it was discovered there was a violation on that site also.
Lucky us, huh?
Well, I got a two for it.
Got a two for it.
I got a two for it. Now, but I think Erin told me there's progress made on this whole thing. What are we, what are we doing with it? Are we doing the violation first, or are you continuing with the application?
I'm gonna ask the commission to continue the application next month. That probably will not produce any business. It was generated by a prospective tenant at the developed 6 Northrop Industrial Park Road West. There's a developed building. The plan was to expand the parking for this proposed tenant. That may not be coming to fruition now. It was very close. We were trying to be somewhat aggressive in getting approval, so I suspect that at your next meeting, you'll probably have this withdrawn by then. It's not looking encouraging. So as to the application that's pending, if you don't mind, if you table one more month, we'll have an answer for you. Either we'll come forward and present it, if the tenant does come to the table, or we will withdraw. As to the violation, I know that, I think Steve McClary has met, has he met with you yet?
No, we're going out tomorrow on that.
Okay, yeah, so we're, we're taking steps to figure out just what, what happened down there. The client is unaware of what was there, so, but...
Okay, so you're, you're on board with the, with the violation? I mean, you're, there's progress being made on the application, on the violation?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so if we table the application, A 17 3.1, are we running out of any time constraints?
No, it was received at the April meeting, so we're good.
The March meeting?
No, it was received at the April meeting.
Okay, I thought 3.1 indicated a March month?
Yeah.
Well, it came in, they submitted it on March 22nd.
Okay.
And then it was, it was, so the clock starts ticking at the April 5th meeting.
Okay, all right. Very good.
Terrific, thank you.
So we'll accept it as being tabled.
Thanks.
Okay, application, A 17 4.1, 14 Greve Trail. This has been approved administratively. We discussed this at the special meeting. We discussed this at the special meeting. Application, A seventeen, four point two, twenty-five Laurelwood, here again, in-ground pool, fencing. This was approved administratively and discussed at the special meeting. Application, A seventeen, four point three, thirty-seven Harrison Road, driveway repaving and recon, demolition reconstruction. Also approved administratively, discussed at the special meeting. And then, application, A sixteen, two point one B. Okay, this was discussed at the special meeting. I'll summarize it. It, it, the outlet to the retention pond got moved upstream on the site. And the, so the outlet structure, the outlet got moved. And moving the outlet structure, uh, the location of the outlet structure, they were going to have this little berm in there to make sure the water, when it came into the retention pond flowed around and did the retention pond before it went out. I didn't care for that because it, I thought the force of the water coming in would wash out this storm berm. And I already pointed out that if we move the inlet to the, the inlet, we move the inlet to the retention pond, it would almost eliminate the need for the berm. Erin indicated that it was a necessity to do what we did on the seventeenth, which is we granted a partial approval of the moving the outlet structure because rain was coming. And, but one of the conditions of that approval was to come back with moving the inlet structure, the inlet to the pond. Did I get it right, Erin?
Yes, I just want to add that, um, one of the conditions of approval was, uh, if, hold on a second, I'm reading...
Then the special, oh, shit.
One of the conditions was that the owner come tonight and to present, and the engineer was here earlier. Did anyone?
He left, two things ago. He got up and walked out.
Okay. Well, there it is. Um, so, but I would like, it would be important to approve this tonight. I don't know if, Mr. Chairman, if you want to go forward without them representing it, I can rep, I have one plan.
Oh, let him, let him come here. We can sit here, they can come here.
Why do you need it approved tonight, Erin?
Oh, okay. Um, because they are, this whole site's opened up and they don't have a storm basin, so it's kind of a problem, like they've had two, two...
You, you said at the seventeenth, we had to approve that because they needed the storm basin?
Yes.
Now, you say they don't have the storm basin?
No, they don't have a storm basin in there yet. No, they don't have it in yet. And so, I, it'd be great if you could approve this because, they can put in a rough hole in the ground.
That's what they were supposed to do last night at the seventeenth?
It hasn't, nothing's happened.
Well, I, I have no interest in assisting them in that.
Can you go out there tomorrow before we have a major capacity disaster?
How are they going to, if you approve it tonight?
I went out there, I went out there at four o'clock today. I was shocked to see they didn't put that level spreader in. I thought it'd be in by now. We went out there, um, town engineer and I, and that engineer and Quality, uh, Quality Associates, the site contractor. We all met there Friday afternoon at three o'clock and we decided where it should go and, you know, we finessed it, you know, we got it exactly where we wanted it to go. And it was supposed to be put in on Monday, now it's Wednesday, so, nothing...
Well, isn't the level spreader the outlet to the retention pond?
Yes, it is.
There's no pond at all?
There's no pond, there's a sort of depression that they overgraded and took down some trees they shouldn't have took down. There's this sort of hole there, yeah.
Well, until they get their, their act together, I...
Are you concerned about the next week of rain we're supposed to have, or no?
I heard on Friday, we're supposed to get a lot.
Yeah. You got a lot of rain coming.
I would find a time tomorrow to take a ride out there and, uh, just so that we're not hearing from, uh, the people downstream that we just wiped their backyards out with muck.
So, maybe they should dig the hole, just a hole, a deep hole?
Something to slow it down, to retain it.
Well, they had the permit for the hole. The only thing they didn't have was the, moving the inlet structure.
Right, and then, and then we didn't like the design, so you had to fiddle with the forbay, right? And that's what he was going to put out tonight.
The, I don't know what you're referring to the forbay, because I didn't think the forbay was needed...
I didn't do it.
...when you, when you, uh, move the inlet structure, I mean.
Well, you still need a, a forbay.
Well, what do you recall, what are you referring to as a forbay?
Well, that's, that sediment, that berm, that whole...
Oh, I don't see why you need that berm. I mean, that berm, that berm was, you told us that berm was to prevent the water from shooting right out to the, to the outlet.
Well, these...
Because the outlet and the inlet were right next to each other.
Oh, no, 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 no. Yes and no, yes and no. These days, they, everybody builds them with forbays, these spaces. They build them with a forbay.
Well...
Mr., may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
You approved this a while back?
We approved a subdivision with a retention pond and everything. They had a, the typical field changes that go on. The outlet to the retention pond had to be moved upstream.
Right.
And when they put the outlet to the retention pond, it came very close to the inlet to the retention pond. So, when the inlet and the outlet, the, the way it was discussed, it looked like it was going to go run in one and run right out the other. They wanted to put an earthen berm in the center of the retention pond to push it around. My feeling was an earthen berm was just going to add, fill dirt to the bottom of the pond. So, the last thing that was said, that they had permission to move the outlet structure, or the outlet pipe, and they needed to come in with a new plan that discussed where the inlet was coming.
Right. I read that somewhere.
Yeah, you were there. You were there when we discussed it at the special meeting.
Yeah.
So, why isn't it, I mean...
They didn't do anything. They haven't done anything.
Well, what they did do is they walked in with their revised plan. I, I'm sorry, I, I don't know if there was enough copies. Did, did people get it? It's dated April twenty-fifth? Did some people get it in the packet and not others? Because they only gave me a few copies.
My que, my question is, though, why are we talking about it tonight if it isn't done? I mean, why hasn't someone told them it's got to be done, or doesn't it work that way?
Something's got to be done.
Well, they were, they know they're under the gun. I, I don't know why they didn't do it, maybe because they knew the rain was coming. I don't, I think that's the only reason I can think of, or I, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. But, so, um, Mr. Chairman, is this, do you have the April twenty-fifth plan?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So, it shows, I, I'm good with it. It shows the basin like we want it, with the inlet down toward the bottom, and that filter berm in the middle, that's not earthen, it's filter, it's a filter...
Well, you see, it's riprap and not dirt.
Correct.
That makes, that wasn't the last one.
Correct, correct. They changed it because of what you said. They moved the inlet back to where it was, like, six months ago. It's, the inlet flared end is where it was six months ago. They moved it back there. They moved that filter berm in a different place, so it's far away from the outlet. I think it's good.
Do we have a bond on that?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Twenty thousand.
Okay. It may not be enough. You laughed.
I have, I would like to see this approved.
You, you want to see this approved tonight?
Yeah, yeah, because then they...
But you wanted, you wanted, at the seventeenth, you wanted something approved, and we approved that, and they didn't do anything.
I cannot answer for why they didn't put that thing in. I do not know why.
As it was all discussed, we got to get this reset, re-depression in the ground so it can handle this on more.
Right. It's staked. The little stakes are there, and I went, Rob and I went out to, we moved them around a little, but we got it right the way we wanted. It's, that was Friday. I don't know why they didn't put it in yet. Because it was kind of an emergency. We, yeah, it was an emergency. That's why I put on the special meeting agenda.
It's two weeks ago, more.
Yeah.
More than two weeks ago, they could have dug the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Now, and, and the outlet has got, is on a level spreader. They haven't done that either, location. It should have dug the hole. They should have dug the hole. I don't, I...
Who enforces this? That's what...
Me. I'm the enforcer, but, uh, yeah.
Well, I, the only reason I would entertain to, to approve this tonight is for the sake of the wetlands and the storm water and the downstream property owners. I would not, uh, uh, vote on this tonight for the benefit of the home, for the contractor. If they can't even stay here, why then?
I feel the same way. You want me to make a motion, though?
Yeah.
Where we can protect our neighbors?
Is that to be done by Friday?
Done by Friday. They could do it by Friday.
Well, I'm saying, would all...
But, obviously, would, they, they don't care what they do or what they don't do.
Yeah.
And make a motion when we get out of here.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, uh, where is it on here?
Seven.
Seven?
Item seven, yeah.
Inland Wetlands, uh, number eight sixteen, two point one B, five thirty Church Street, Timberwood Homes LLC, modification to permit basin inlet and forbay. I make a motion that we give, uh, the applicant permission to adjust the inlet and outlet on the retention...
Fit his plans.
As per his plans submitted with Erin.
Motion made, second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Darrell?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, a new business, Land Trust. Do you want to discuss that tonight, or is that the next one?
Oh, yes. That was, they, they got an extension at the April meeting, where you weren't here, that meeting. They got an extension to build that boardwalk. They're having Eagle, Eagle Scout build the next section. They need an extension of the original permit. Fine, they got that. But I forgot to ask for a waiver. They wanted a waiver for the, for the, it'd be a hundred and ten dollars. They wanted that waived, so... Actually...
What's the hundred and ten dollars?
I'm sorry, to extend it would be, they, they have a check in for fifty dollars, so they wanted the fifty-dollar fee waived. We, we charged fifty dollars for an extension of permit.
Oh, yeah, that's, I, I, can I entertain a motion to waive the permit for the Land Trust for the extension permit fee?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we waiver the, uh, extension cost for the, uh, Land Trust, wait, permit waiver for the Land Trust.
Motion made, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, why did they need an extension for the start?
Well, they have five years, and they built the first section, but they need, you know, they had to wait till they had an Eagle Scout, and now they got one to build the second section.
Well, what did we just approve about three months ago? With the, was it the fishing deck and everything?
Oh, no, no, no.
Fresh metal swamp?
No, that's, that's the town. That's the town, that's the fresh metal swamp.
Oh, that was the Conservation Commission?
The Conservation Commission got a grant from the state of Connecticut to build some of the trails.
Call for a vote. Darrell?
Yes.
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, no app, no application, elective officers, we don't have a full slate? Are we, so we're not voting tonight?
You're not supposed to.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have anything else to report? If not, we'll adjourn.
Um, just, I'd like to comment on the, uh, letter that came in, the letter from EverSource Energy, just because of who they are, they're, um, extending a natural gas line along Route sixty-eight, and they don't need wetland. They are impacting some wetlands, but they don't need wetland, um, approval. They get it at the state level. We have maps, they sent me maps, but just so you know, if you see some work in the wetlands, they've got it covered.
We've already been this, but they do have their, they do have a good environmental department. They have, they, every contractor that works for them has to take a course in, uh, turtles. You got to take a course on it, on how to handle turtles when they're working on the site.
Good, for the turtles. Um, I've got a question, Mr. Chairman, on the six oh five North Elm Street, um, violation. Are we doing a remediation? Are we not doing anything, or what are we doing with that?
I, I think it all's come into there. They'll, they'll be replanting and whatever that, they took out, and then some.
Okay, so, do we want to table that till next time?
Well, I think, I think it just can be eliminated.
Just so...
It's part of the permit that they just got granted. I don't think there's a violation anymore.
Okay, so, do you want to make a vote, or just go, just, that's it?
Well, we take, we can take a vote. There, there's an item, number four under violation, six oh five North Elm Street, unpermitted tree and vegetation clearing. When you came down to what, how many trees that were within the fifty-foot upland review area that was taken down, I don't, I don't think the number was that large compared to the ten-acre site. They're replanting fruit trees. I think there'll be a lot of trees replanted in the normal course of, of landscaping your yard. So, I think that is certainly, when I asked them about that, that was the mitigation I saw for the trees that were taken down right on the edge of the pond.